It might take me a second to figure this out. Nope. Nobody signed up to speak.
Called the Broken Arrow City Council, meeting to order. We have invocation by Pastor Chris, because I can't say his last name. Burstkirk?
Buzzkirk.
Buzzkirk.
Can I turn around this way?
Sure.
All right. Let's open with a word of prayer, shall we? Lord God, we thank you that tonight, everything we do here is something that you care about. The decisions we make, the visions we're given, the cooperation that weaves this city's future. Father, we pray your blessings on it. We thank you that the plans that are made here tonight, the decisions that are made as they affect the citizens of Broken Arrow, they affect your kids. There's no one that we'll ever lock eyes with that your son didn't die for. And so, Father, give us wisdom beyond our own tonight. We pray that as you've blessed Broken Arrow, that we'll continue to be a blessing to one another. And we pray, Father, that for each of us, you'll give us a heart for all of us, and for all of us, a heart for each of us. And we pray that you pour your wisdom into this time. Bless this community. We thank you for your protection over it, for your blessing of it, for the wonderful place it is for us to work and to play, to worship, to raise our families. We pray that blessings would flow to this council and through it to all the people it affects. And we thank you for your being in the midst of it all. We ask your blessings in your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Roll call. Lisa?
Here.
Johnny Parks?
Here.
Scott Udi?
Here.
Christie Gillespie?
Here.
Deborah Wimpy?
Here.
We have, the next item is the consent agenda, and we have items O and... Pledge... See, you called out the roll call and made me skip. Please stand and join Councilor Parks for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, I'm so sorry. Please support.
That's okay, I'll do it.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ford. You threw me off.
I did?
All right, next item is item five, consideration of the consent agenda. We are going to pull items O and P.
O and P? And just...
I have a conflict.
He has a conflict.
And also, I requested to pull item C.
For discussion?
Just for discussion.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda absent items C, O, and P.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Roll call.
Hold on a sec, I'm sorry. I think I missed that up, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you want to do verbal?
You.
Yeah, we'll just...
You want to do a verbal?
We can do a voice vote.
So that was, I'll just write it down.
The motion was to approve the consent agenda, item, I, absent items C, O, and P.
And I seconded. Cop.
Christie, Christie seconded it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
So we went to the motion.
Okay. All right, so item five, C.
We need a roll call.
We need a roll call. And this, that's where I was, that's where I was, okay. Lisa?
Yes.
Ford, Johnny Parks?
Yes.
Scott Udi?
Yes.
Christie Gillespie?
Yes.
And Deborah Wimpy?
Yes.
Okay. So is it back on now?
I think.
You think? Okay. Okay. Almost. Item five, C, approval of and authorization to execute a proclamation declaring the week of March 21st, 2022 Arbor Week. Matt Hendren.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Matt Hendren, Parks Recreation Director, and it's honored to come before you for the approval of the 2022 Arbor Week proclamation. Arbor Day is observed annually throughout the nation and world. The purpose of Arbor Day is to recognize the importance of trees in our environment and to encourage all residents to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. The council's approval of the Arbor Week proclamation is an important aspect of the city's continued status as a Tree City USA. The city of Broken Arrow is celebrating its 22nd year as a Tree City USA city. So, Councilwoman Gillespie asked that I come up here and talk a little bit about the Commemorative Tree Program. So we, the city has a Commemorative Tree Program. You can find the information about the program at BAParks.org. And so, basically, you can commemorate a tree to a loved one or friends, and the trees are $225 for the first tree, $200 for every additional tree after that. We will work with you, basically, to pick a spot, if you have a spot in mind, based on the species of tree and where it's located, to make that happen. We would love to have more people plant trees. I would say yearly, we probably have around a dozen or so people that plant trees, but it'd be nice, nice to have more. Also, I wanted to mention while I'm up here that the 2022 Arbor Day planting, we're going to partner with Oak Crest Elementary School, and we're going to plant three elms and two red buds, red buds, at Arrowhead Park on March 22nd at 10:00 a.m.
And I assume we're all welcome to come and help dig the holes?
Please.
And plant the trees?
Please.
Thank you, Matt.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to approve consent item C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ford? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
And Wimpy?
Yes. Okay. Item five, O, approval of PT-16-114B, conditional final plot for Whiskey Ridge Two. Larry Curtis.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, this is the conditional final plot for Whiskey Ridge Two, which contains 26.5 acres located one quarter mile east of 23rd Street and one quarter mile south of Rockford Street. Property of which is undeveloped, is proposed to contain 101 lots. BAZ 1969, a request to rezone the property from A1 to RS3, along with PUD 256, was approved by City Council on February 7th, 2017. The Technical Advisory Committee reviewed, reviewed and approved this item in their meeting of February 1st, 2022. In their meeting of February 10th, 2022, Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero of the conditional final plot subject to an attached list. No one spoke in opposition or, or supported this item at that time, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Sorry about that, I was sharing our meeting on my Facebook page. I like people to watch. Nope.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve item O. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Hey.
Yay.
So he is recused.
Okay. Item P, approval of PUD 337, First National Bank, Aspen. Larry Curtis.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. With PUD 337, the applicant is proposing to increase the width of the north entrance to accommodate both the entrance and the exit of traffic to the site. Pro's driveway expansion requires a PUD to reduce the requirements of Section 5.3B and 5.3B3 of the zoning ordinance. PUD 337 requires to reduce the distance between the driveways on Otterio Street from the standard 250 feet to 110 feet. This offset with the access point to the offset of the Otterio Street is also required linear feet of 200 feet and 150 feet. This is to accommodate a future lot split request by the applicant, which is First National Bank of Broken Arrow. In their meeting of February 10th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote, vote of five to zero of PUD 2037 per staff recommendation. No one spoke in not support or opposition to this item. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions, but I bank there, and I always forget that they have that location.
Mm-hmm.
Like, always, so...
I make a motion, we approve PUD 337, item P.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ford? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Udi? He's gone. Gillespie?
Yes.
And Wimpy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. Item A, recognition of a local hero, retired U.S. Air Force Major and World War II Veteran, Virgil Domino. Gene Roberts?
I'm sorry, I was asleep.
Thanks for coming back to us.
Well, we didn't tell Virgil what was going on there. I didn't lie to him, I just didn't tell him all the truth. This is a tribute to the greatest generation, retired United States Air Force Major Virgil Domino, right there. Virgil was born August 31st, 1922, in Iowa. He claims to have been only a typical farm boy that loved airplanes. He built model airplanes, shot and flew them. The farm was in his line, was the flight path of a local airport. One day, he looked up and saw a silver bullet flying overhead. He found out later it's the P-51 Mustang, most beautiful airplane ever built, fastest piston-powered fighter in World War II. It flew 437 miles an hour. It had a top speed of 437. He ran the end of the house and told his mother, "I know what I'm going to do with my life. I am going to enlist with the United States Army and fly the P-51." She gave him her blessing, and that's hard to believe in the middle of World War II. She gave him her blessings. He entered the Army on November 20th, 1942, right in the middle of World War II. He took his training in St. Louis, Missouri. He then transferred from U.S. Army into the United States Army Air Force in order to fulfill his desire to fly that P-51. The first airplane he learned to fly was a PT-22 Ryan while it was stationed in Hemet, California. He'd moved to Hemet from Beloit, Wisconsin, at the governor's request. While in California as a flight officer, he wanted to fly that P-51, the hottest thing in the air at that time. Instead, he wound up in the left seat of a four-engine B-24 bomber. Does that sound like the military? He flew the bomber throughout 43 and 44. He then became a pilot and instructor for the B-24. He was then commissioned to a second lieutenant. In 45, Virgil was sent to Boise, Idaho to fly B-24s. He married Millie in Boise. She was raised in Oklahoma, but he met her in Iowa. One of the gifts he gave her was one and a half hour ride over Tokyo, Japan, and a T-60 trainer. He swears the Army knew what he was doing. I think he swiped it and went joyriding. He won't admit it. Before they got to Japan, he had a tour in Walla Walla, Washington, and Orlando, Florida. In Japan, his primary aircraft was a P-61 Black Widow from '46 to '49. From '49 to '56, he was stationed in San Antonio, Texas, Ellington Field, Bryan Field, and Laredo, Texas. From there, he flew to San Marquis, teaching Army pilots as an Air Force instructor how to fly the Cub and the L-19. With training, completely transferred to Lincoln Air Force Base, Omaha, Nebraska, as a pilot in Strategic Air Command. Year 62 and year unique in military, in military history. Due to the Cuban Missile Crisis, I was activated in November 1962 out of the Air Force Reserve from Muskogee. So I'm well-equipped to that one. Wherever called to duty, I was with the 65th Troop Carrier Squadron. We had a bunch of Korean vintage C-190 flying boxcars. That's why I can't hear it today. He was upstairs in a B-47, jet bomber. And in the Bombay, he had the largest nuclear weapon that the United States had at that time, 32,000-pound nuke. On the side of it was a city. His buddy flying next to him in the B-52 had four smaller ones than his. They also had the same city name on them. I won't tell you what the city was, but it started with an M and they didn't put that up yet. So he's up there flying back and forth, and we thought we were going to World War III. It doesn't take Einstein to determine if you've got two airplanes up there on hold carrying nukes toward Russia, somebody thinks it's going to be a war. Thank goodness there wasn't. Thank God almighty, President John F. Kennedy, who was a real leader, and it belated stand-down by Khrushchev. He went, I went back to Tulsa, he took off to Spain and England. It was close. I was telling my wife last week, I just hoped that this thing at the Ukraine would end that way with stand-down. Putin will not stand down, and that's scary. I'm sorry. Virgil retired from USOFA in 1965, having flown 15,000 hours as pilot in command. He was in uniform 22 years and a few months before retiring with the rank of major. He's been a, probably in, private in command in 40 to 50-type warbirds. That's unheard of. Well, retirement without flying wasn't Virgil's idea of retirement. He learned his idea, retirement is another name for it, is boring. He and Millie having breakfast in their home in Broken Arrow one morning, Virgil says, "I only know how to do these things, fly and farm, and I'm not going back to farm." A few days later, he saw an ad in the Tulsa paper, "Wanted Qualified Car Girl Pilots for Southeast Asia." And this is during Cuba, the Vietnam War. "Please contact Air America, Florida, USA." Well, we know now Air America was clandestine arm of Central Intelligence Asia, spooks. He looks over at Millie and said, "Hey, I think I can do that." He called them. And next six and a half years, he flew out of Laos, Saigon, Bangkok, Thailand, and other cities he can't name because they're still unclassified 50 years later. But like a dummy asking a question that you're not supposed to ask as an airman, you learn right first, before you ask a question of spirit, you should ask yourself the question first, "Do I have the need to know?" Well, I knew that, I didn't pay any attention to it. I was interviewing for a paper we put together a few years ago, and I said, "Virgil, what in the world you haul over the world?" Number one, I had no need to know that. He says, 50% of the case, I had no idea what was in that cargo bin, and I didn't care. He said, "The other 50%, if I tell you, I might shoot you." End of conversation. Virgil is a classic patriot. He does not brag about his accomplishments. In fact, he is timid in his demeanor. He does not ask for recognition for what he has done. He will tell you, "I just did my job, and I did the best I could." After logging 18,000 hours as pilot in command, flying nearly 50 separate aircraft, and by the way, he never got to fly the P-51. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Well, I have a proclamation for Mr. Domino. Gene, do you want to bring him up?
Gene, can you bring Virgil up?
She'll go. Oh, okay. Virgil, watch your step. Because one of us is going to fall down.
Deborah?
Yes, sir.
Virgil will be 100 years old in August.
By the way, August 31st, 2022, you're going to be a part of the Broken Arrow. I appreciate you very much, everybody. Have a good time.
Appreciate you and you.
Thank you.
Listen, I'll see you in a picture.
That's awesome.
I have a party at the house.
Okay. We're all invited, right?
Yeah. A lot of, Nick, or Chuck, like it?
Yeah.
Run it back to me. We do it.
Thank you.
Projecting one, he's not tired of having our warning.
That's awesome. He's so cute. You're ready. You are. Item seven, B, Presentation of Broken Arrow Centennials, 100 Legacy Makers from 1902 to 2002. Volume two. We'll take her shirt.
Put my cheaters on here.
Yes.
We've been working on a project for the last four years. It's called Meet the Broken Arrow Centennials, the 100 Legacy Makers from 1902 to 2002. And we've awarded, given each one of the council members a copy of volume two. We've already given you volume one last year. So you have both volumes. We, we got into this project and realized it was going to be a lot bigger than what we started. In 2002, Broken Arrow Centennial, Broken Arrow Centennial, the Broken Arrow Ledger asked the readers to select 100 citizens who they believed were the most influential in involvement, involvement in the establishment and growth and development of our town. A list of the ones selected were compiled and published in the ledger between 2002 and 2003. Jan and I were asked to be involved in this project in 2017, and before the book was, was completed, we realized that there are many more important aspects we wanted to share, not only about these legacy makers, but about the development of our town itself. From that evolved into two volumes. The first book begins in 1902 and ends with the Great Depression. The second book starts at World War II in 1941 and actually is brought up to the current year, 2022, 120 years of Broken Arrow history. We completed the second volume at the end of 2021. This is a compilation of four years of blood, sweat, tears, research, traveling to Alabama and Georgia, and compiling all this information. As Broken Arrow continues to grow and expand and develop as it currently is, we felt it was important for our readers, especially the newcomers to our community, to be able to connect to our town as they see it now and learn how it began. It's our privilege and honor to share this book as a gift to our Broken Arrow City Council and other community leaders in our town.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
This is, this actually is the fourth book on the history of Broken Arrow that's been published, but this one goes into more of the personal lives of the people that were here, other than just the history of the town. So, we thank you very much, and you can get copies of this book at the 1907 store, Military History Center, and we got a bunch of them too.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. I know how much work you guys have put into this, so we appreciate you both so very much.
Thank you very much. It's our pleasure, and we, you, most of you know how much we love Broken Arrow. We also wanted to give both copies to Chief Barry Hill and one to our Superintendent of Schools. And whoever's not here, we will get them to them.
Okay, Chief is right back.
I saw him there. That's why I thought I better mention that. Thank you very much.
I might say that I've read quite a bit, well, I've read pretty much both of them. And this one I really enjoyed, is people that I started out as a young councilman with. Dr. Newcomb was my campaign manager for the first three years or 12 years of my young city council life, and, and Pap Reynolds was my role model as a mayor, followed him and Nick Hood, you know, so it's really brings me joy, and they would be happy with this council and the decisions that they're making to build on what these leaders at that time did. So I really appreciate everything, but the picture of the guy in the bathtub.
That was Jack Ross.
That, that was me in the bathtub.
Oh, you in the bathtub. Oh, different bathtub.
And it was Ralph. It was Ralph, I'm trying to help you sell books.
Right, thank you.
Oh, now everyone's going to go grab one.
He tried to bring your promo.
We, we learned a lot about people in Broken Arrow that we've lived here all of our life, the, some of the facts that they may or may not wanted us to know, but we, we learned a lot of important facts about people that we had no clue about, and it was really an educational experience for us to get in and find out.
That was Ralph Blaine Hunsacker's bathtub, and we had plumbed it. And it's the first seven-by-seven Kohler tub that they shipped out of Kohler, Wisconsin. And it was 24 karat gold, the faucets were 24 karat gold, you can't see it in the book. And it took Ralph Blaine, it took him 30 minutes to get me and my dad to sit down in that tub, and so he could service hors d'oeuvres in it. He just had to have a picture of that bathtub.
And of all the pictures.
So I thought, nobody's ever going to see that.
Of all the pictures, we would have loved to have had that one in color, the 24 karat gold.
Page 404.
You've already found it. It's quite an extensive index.
And I, I apologize, because there's actually, I don't know if it's in the book, there's a picture of Jack Ross in the Rooster Days Parade in a tub going down Main Street, advertising for the old Ross drugs.
We'll have to get that for a sequel.
I, I happen to know where it's at, so I'll let you know.
Well, I might also mention that Johnny and I graduated the same year from Broken Arrow High School, and of course, he knows I wouldn't want to embarrass him, but he is one of the legacy makers, so I know you'll enjoy reading about him too.
He is, indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're getting his autograph by his picture in the bathtub.
Let's move on.
In the bathtub. Okay. Got distracted with Johnny in the bathtub. Sorry.
I was trying to sell books for him.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, there's no action to be taken on that one. Item seven, C, Presentation by Craig Henderson of Youth Services of Tulsa, Inc., regarding services provided to the city of Broken Arrow. Trevor Dennis or Craig Henderson?
I'm Craig Henderson. I'm Clinical Director with Youth Services of Tulsa. Our main offices are obviously downtown, east of downtown Tulsa, but we've had a satellite office here in Broken Arrow at 860 South Aspen, I believe. You probably better know it, it's next to Tiger Driving School, I believe. I'll be brief as possible, I know you guys, meetings are sometimes long. It's kind of unusual for me to be on this side of the podium. I recognize some of you all from our INCOG meetings, as this is my day job, and my other job is mayor of the city of Sepulpa, so it's kind of nice to be on this side. While we provide counseling services for a lot of the Broken Arrow teens, the city of Broken Arrow contracts with us to provide what we call first offender services. And we have one coordinator over this program and three case managers who do the initial assessments on the teens. The philosophy of this, philosophy of this program is that we get the kids when they first committed a minor crime misdemeanor, and hopefully, early intervention, and we don't see, see them again, and the courts don't see them again. Of course, that's the philosophy, that's not necessarily always the reality. Sometimes, it's the first time they've actually been caught, and so when we do the assessments, there may need to be more intervention than simply just talking to the family the first time. A couple of things your municipal courts do for us that some of the other municipalities don't. don't, is, and that we don't have to worry about, is they automatically assign community service to these teens. And we have to do that sometimes with some of the other cities, so that's nice. The other thing too, if it involves a drug charge such as possession of marijuana, they require six UAs of that young person to be able to successfully complete that program. So that's nice as well. All our assessments are done in the office, and given what the parents, parent, guardian, teen share with us, there's a number of different options that they have in order to complete successfully this process. One is MAP classes, which is misdemeanor alternative program, and it's a 12-hour program spread over about three weeks, and it requires the youth and apparent parents or guardian to attend those, and they have to attend all of them. Usually, we deal with decision-making, anger management, communication, just some basic stuff with them. And this is probably the most popular intervention that we use, and a lot of our kids go through that. We also have our counseling services. We have master's level counselors that can provide family counseling, can provide substance abuse counseling. So if there's more, when we do the assessment, if there's more going on than just the simple offense that they committed, a lot of times the first offender counselors will assign them to another counselor. We also have, like I said, our substance abuse department, if it involves some substance abuse, we also have substance abuse groups we can refer them to. We also do what's called symbolic restitution. If there's not a victim that requires some sort of restitution that it'd be paid to, we ask them to do some symbolic restitution where they actually go out and make some money somehow, and take that money and say, find a nonprofit, any kind of nonprofit, and they buy goods for that nonprofit, and they donate those goods to that nonprofit. So that's something we ask them to do as well. Apology letters, there's a number of other different things, but that's the main gist of the program. Prior to the pandemic, we also had ropes courses, but currently, to our knowledge, there's no active rope courses open right now. So hopefully, someone will take over some of those rope courses and we can restart those. The other thing some communities do, but the only current active one is Owasso, is a youth court. If that's something Broken Arrow is interested in looking at, again, we have done that before. It does require a lot of youth volunteers, as well as volunteers from the legal community. So it's, there's a lot of work that goes into it, but they're pretty effective as well. But we're not currently doing that at Broken Arrow. I think the only active youth court we have is in Owasso. And once successfully completed, or they lack the follow-through, we send a report to the judge. We have approximately between 20 and 30 referrals a month from the city of Broken Arrow, and we, we send one of our FOP counselors to court every week. They meet once a week, so. With that being said, entertain any questions, or get out of here and let you all continue.
So on youth court, it's the youth, whatever sentence they give that person, that like, that sticks. I just wanted to make, I don't know if you all knew that or not.
Yes, and, and, and they have guidance from attorneys so that they don't go overboard, but.
Yeah.
It is pretty effective when the peers are, 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 you know, doing that with the other peers, so.
So we used to, we used to do that? I didn't remember.
Yeah, we used to have one.
Yes, a long time ago. We've been at Broken Arrow for a long time.
You know, I was going to say that, and that's why I've always appreciated, every time, every year when we approve this, you know, how we sit on different boards. And I was on their Board of Directors for a couple of years as a young councilman, and really had that certainly concern for youth, and it was a great opportunity for the youth and a way to get their lives turned around. So there might be that opportunity one of these days to sit on their board.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't have, no one's on your board now, right?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I interned when I was in leadership at Broken Arrow. That was the board that I interned on, but that was like 2001.
I do think we have some citizens from Broken Arrow.
Well, back in my early days as a young lawyer, those have long passed, but back in my early days as a young lawyer, I had the opportunity to work with some youth and represent some youth, and having that as an option.
Yeah.
Over some of the other things that, getting shoved into a, a holding facility, and usually that didn't end up well for them. Having this option is really something special and important, and I'm glad it's there and I appreciate what y'all do.
Do you have volunteers? Do, do volunteers serve?
For the, with the youth court?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Or with you, I mean, just in general, at your locations or?
Yes, yes, we have a lot of volunteers.
Like the Safe Place, you still do the Safe Place?
Yes, we have Safe Place volunteers. We have groups come in to, we have an emergency youth, 24-hour emergency youth shelter. We have groups that do meals and a lot of different projects that volunteers do. And we're, you know, we're one of probably the first mental health agencies that are serving youth to fully, completely open back up. And so we've gotten away from the Zoom sessions, and people are just tired of that. So we're excited to be getting back on our feet and back fully in business.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody else did. I requested for someone to come speak about this, just because I've been a counselor for almost three years now, and I just, I didn't really know exactly what, what the program did. And so, thank you so much for coming.
Yes, it does.
I like to know what I'm voting on, what our people are spending money on, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'll see you guys Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope.
Oh, we'll be at OML. Are you going, are you not going to OML? Mayor's conference? Sorry.
The eighth is BA Day at the Capitol.
Yeah, it's BA Day at the Capitol.
We're doing BA Day. That's right. Yes. Okay. So item eight, a citizen's opportunity to address council. There are no citizens signed up to speak. Item nine, general council business, 9A, consideration discussion and possible approval of the proposed name Preserve Park for the neighborhood park located at 3,000 North 37th Street. Matt Hindren.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm Matt Hindren, Parks and Recreation Director. It's my pleasure to come and speak with you about our newest neighborhood park, which is located at 3,000 North 37th Street. That's on 37th Street between Albany and Omaha. I think I have a few slides of five, five pictures I was going to show you guys. Sorry about that. So the, the newest park is a neighborhood park. It's called out in the master plan. There's a total of five new neighborhood parks that are called out in the master plan. This is one of them. There is a current naming and renaming of parks and city facilities policy that was approved by council, November 4th of 1996, and the policy states that neighborhood parks should be named after the subdivision in which they're located. And this park is located adjacent to the Preserve Development, and it's being built as part of a development agreement. And so staff recommends naming the park Preserve Park based off of our current naming policy that's, that's in place. So the, the park, apologize about the photos, but the park includes a splash pad, a playground, some walking trails, some plaza areas, and then some other park site amenities that normal parks would have, benches and trash cans and such. It's, it's pretty awesome. It's going to be great. It's supposed to be done around May 1st, which is just in time for splash pad season. So we'll be able to open that up for this, this summer. So we're, we're really excited about this new, new neighborhood park.
On our brand new street.
Yes.
Nice.
I'd make a motion to name the park, the proposed, to approve the proposed name Preserve Park for the neighborhood park located at 3,000 North 37th Street.
Second. Or Lisa will second.
Second. No one's pressing the button, so I just thought I'd press the button.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Yes.
John Parks?
Yes.
There we go.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item 9B, consideration discussion and possible approval. You might want to stay up here. You're on this one again. Possible approval of and authorization to execute professional services agreement with Olson, Inc., for providing design services for Phase 1 of Elam Park.
So it's like the Matt Hindren night. This is three times in one night. That never happens for parks. This is exciting.
It's okay. Travis gets to be up here three times.
Well, and I thought, I thought Ethan was going to be on this one, so I was like, oh, we're going to beat it, I'm going to beat up Ethan again. Darn it.
So this is the possible approval to execute professional services agreement with Olson for the first phase of Elam Park. And that first phase, and there's the Phase 1 master plans on the screen, but it includes, primarily includes destination playground, restrooms, courtyard, walking trail, and parking. And the total contract amount is $267,875, which includes design services and construction documents, so we can bid out the work.
And I'm the one that sent all the questions about, and so I sent a bunch of questions, and I'm going to, when I, in a moment, I'm going to ask just to table this for, for now until the next meeting, and just because I want to make sure that when we look at all the consultant, like fees that we're doing, and I know there's, there are organizations out there that provide a lot of services within whatever they're selling, if it's a distributor or manufacturer that sells whatever. Some of these engineering services are included in their fees, and it just, I just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence, that we're not always just going straight to a consultant to do all this. And because, believe me, no one wants, I mean, I was on this committee as was Scott, and I, nobody wants this park more than I do. I mean, it's, it's in my ward. I mean, I, I'm super excited about it, but I also want to make sure that if there's any money that we can save, that we can spend on some awesome park amenity, that we can do that. And, and also, I, I always believe, I mean, this is not our money. This is the people's money, the people's park, and so I want to make sure that we're getting, doing everything we can to save money, but also getting quality. And it's possible that what we're doing, that's what we should do, and that's what I want to find out. So, hope that makes sense.
Do you want to make a motion?
I will. I just didn't know if anybody else had any questions.
There, this, the people we use are licensed and bonded and, and, and qualified, pre-qualified. Is that correct?
Katie Schwab, Assistant City Manager of Operations, I'll answer a couple of those questions. Yeah, we use professional licensed engineers registered in the state of Oklahoma. Anytime that we do a contract, a design of capital improvements, we want to make sure that we comply with the state statutes, and the Board of Professional Engineers and Surveyors, we want to make sure that they're registered, they've got a certificate of authorization from, authorization from them, and that they do have the license capability. Anytime that we're putting in a water, a sewer, a storm sewer, a detention pond, and the streets, we want to make sure that they have the civil engineers. If there's a building, there's actually a state statute that requires a facility that's over, I think it's 159,400. I believe that state statute requires an architect. So we go through that process. When we selected the engineers in 2018, we did the general obligation bond, we did an RFP, Request for Proposal, and went out and had, I think, 71 engineering firms submit. So we've ranked all of them based on their capabilities and went through that process. This engineer that we're recommending tonight, I have no problem with tabling it, is on that, that selection.
You, you, you go through the same process with architects too?
Yes, sir.
Is that not correct? We just don't go with the lowest bid meeting the specifications. We go through history of it, we go through if they're licensed and bonded and everything. Is that correct?
Yes. Professional services aren't bid, but they are selected, and they do, just like you said, they are required to have professional liability insurance. That's what protects the community.
Well, and I thought the Vice Mayor's questions were good.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And were appropriate to be asked, but I thought they were answered. So that's why, I mean, I don't know that I would, I don't know that it needs to be tabled or delayed, because I thought the questions were answered, and I'm not sure, I mean, that's what we pay you all to do is to vet these things. So that's why I'm a little confused.
The reason, and the reason that I felt like, and it wasn't that I feel that, that anybody that was, that submitted this was not qualified, or, I mean, I'm certainly not in the position to say that. But it was that there are, there are companies out there that do, you know, that, I'll just throw, I mean, I'm just going to like do playgrounds and splash pads and all these things, that these services, the design services are actually included in their fees. So we don't have to, we wouldn't, it's possible, and I don't know, I mean, I just want to check it. It's possible we wouldn't have to pay the fees.
But I thought that those questions were answered. I thought that question was raised and answered. Is it that this is because it's for the whole thing?
Well, but they also do that. And I came back, and I didn't send it to everybody. So, if that makes sense.
I don't mind tabling it. I just kind of questioned, you know what I mean?
I don't know what we're going to learn in the week.
Right.
That's, that's the question I'm asking.
Maybe you can separate, maybe you can separate the playground equipment out. Maybe it doesn't have to be a licensed bonded person for the playground equipment.
No, no, no. These people are all licensed and bonded too. It's not that they're not. It, and I, I mean, I feel like I'm speaking for them, and I'm certainly not. It's, what, okay, I'll use my personal, I'm going to use a personal professional experience. In my professional, like in, whenever, as a dental rep, I sold, I was a distributor rep, and I, I repped for many manufacturers, hundreds. And I would go into an office and say, I can build out your office. And they would say to me, well, I want to use my architect and my engineer and my, my plumber and all these. And they felt like, you know, I know that, I, I know that they're bonded, I know la, la, la. And I would say to them, no, well, that's fine, and you can do that, but we do all those things. Like all those things that you are saying you want to, that you want to have your consultant do, we actually do that, and we don't charge you extra for it. And there's a lot of distributors, manufacturers that do that in every industry. And whereas you, and the reason is because when you have, you know, multi-hundred million dollar companies, they can afford to hire their own engineers, their own architects. And these, and if they're working in, in large, you know, cities that require the exact same things that we do, they know that in order to get the business, they have to do that. And, and it's a, it's a perk. It's a one-stop shop that they can offer that maybe a smaller company can't offer. And that, that was the only thing, that's the question I have, is because just knowing that most industries are like that, and after speaking to someone that said, we do all this, literally all those things, they do. Then I was like, oh, well, yeah, if we can save a couple hundred thousand or even 100,000, I, I think maybe we should look into it. And that is my only question. And it might come back, and they, and it happens to be that, you know what, they can't save us any money, and, or we just don't feel comfortable with it. We would rather just stay the course. I am totally great with that. And it's, so it's nothing against anything, all the work that everyone's done, and, but it's more about, well, let's, can we just look at this other option and just maybe?
Would we have to go back to bid? Would they have to submit a bid to someone else?
I mean, we'd have to start from scratch, wouldn't we?
It would be, well, the, since they're professional services, they're not bid, they're selected through an RFP. So we could go through the RFP process and allow them the opportunity to submit.
How much time would that take?
Okay. Let's have that city manager discuss. He might be able to answer some questions.
The way that it's being presented to you tonight is the traditional way that you would actually do a project, where you hire a consultant, albeit an architect or an engineer, you scope out for them what it is that you want done, and then they give you a professional services price to do A through L, A through Z, whatever it is. That is the traditional way it's doing. The way the Vice Mayor is presenting it, and Council, it's ultimately the decision is yours. What she's presenting tonight is, she wants the staff to go back and look at, are these, because what's going to happen is we're going to award a bid, and then they're going to have subcontractors, in some cases, that are going to provide various elements of whatever A through L is. Okay? And what I understand her saying is, is that those A through L may have engineering professional services that they could provide as a part of their bid, that we would not have to, to receive from Olson, to where you could narrow Olson's scope to the traditional site improvements, parking lot, and the coordination of the subcontractors putting in the various improvements. And I'd like to have this tabled, because this is a traditional way it's being presented. I think it's worth two weeks of looking and seeing if seeing if those different entities have what she's suggesting, because when you're talking 200 and some thousand dollars, it's worth a pause to look. And if, in fact, it doesn't, then we can say we looked at it, because every time you all go to various conferences and trade shows, people approach you, say they can provide these services. And it would be really good that if it turns out this way we're doing it has been vetted, then you can talk to those people that we looked at that, and that's something that Broken Air doesn't do. And if it comes back that they do provide some element, then we would have to, to put another package together, which could take probably, I would say, another month or so. So, really, it's up to the council. Do you want to delay this as been requested, and see if we could save some money? Or do you want to go with the traditional way that's being presented?
Well, I, all, the only question I have is, I don't wanna delay this two weeks and be in the same place we are, and we've delayed it two weeks. If, I'm asking you all, is there, I mean, is there, is there a legitimate chance we could save money? Because, yes, if we can save money, we should, but I don't want to delay it, just to delay it. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I'm gonna defer to Kenny, because I'm not a trained engineer. I'm a Parks and Recreation guy, so.
Thank you. From what I have seen, the, the company that we're kinda looking at may be able to provide the services. They are not registered in the state of Oklahoma. From what I can see, they might, you know, and they don't have engineers on staff. Typically, as Mr. Spurgeon just said, say, Engineer A does this project. When they look at the playground equipment, they're gonna work with vendors. And the company that we're talking about would be a likely vendor here that we would be working with, and that there would still be some of their individual design aspects, but they're still working under the registered professional engineer. So, to answer your question, I don't have enough information to say, do they, are they licensed in Oklahoma? Do they have any registered professional engineers? From their website, I didn't see anything, but, you know, maybe they didn't show it.
Well, and I guess I need to understand better. Are we, are we talking about piecemealing this out? Like, this, this group does the, does the playground, and they do all this work for the playground, including what's included in Olson, but Olson or some other organizations does for the rest? This is, I don't understand.
That's, that's correct, Scott. You'd have to, you'd have to re, you'd have to, it's gonna take additional time. To answer your original question, we're probably not gonna be in a position to look at this in two weeks.
Right, so it's 60 days?
Probably.
Okay.
To actually look at this and thoroughly vet it. So, we have looked at it. It will take additional time. But what would happen is, if we determine any of those potential bidders have the ability to provide that service that Olson's provided, then we would revise Olson's scope to just coordinate with, with that vendor. And that's something we just have to look at. It's a non-traditional way of looking at this. And it really, if the council, do you wanna go forward the traditional way, or do you want to, as requested by, you know, one of your fellow council members, to look at this, which is going to take additional time? And then, if it turns out that that's possible, then that's something that we use as, consider as a model when we're looking at other type projects. If it's not, then we go, we've, we've looked at this, and they weren't capable of, capable of providing something, so therefore, we're gonna stay the traditional way.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, that, yes, we wanna find out what our options are for this project, but it'll, it'll also help us know the answer to that question for further, you know, future projects. So, even though I know no one really wants it to be delayed, but if they do go back and find out that we're, we're gonna get our playground, you know, equipment, that they provide all this for free, then that's over $200,000 that we could spend on something else. I think it's worth waiting, just, and even if you come back and say, nope, this is the best way, then I'll feel a lot better, too, voting for that, because we did our due diligence to make sure that there wasn't any other options.
You know, could we go ahead and just let the staff look at it for two weeks, and say, we'll bring it back in two weeks instead of delaying it?
I would support a two-week delay, but I don't wanna go 60 days.
Because I, I support the delay. Looking at it, if there's a possibility, then we can make a decision for a longer delay. But let's just look at it for the two-week period, and then bring it back, 'cause I don't wanna hold it up. I certainly don't want it, and neither does Vice Mayor. She doesn't want an inferior project. We don't want a bunch of people coming in and piecemealing it. We know that. So, if it takes all of it together, but if you guys could look at it for two weeks, and then bring it back, and let's start it up from where we're at right now, to see if we wanted to let longer.
Because the reality is, any dollar we save is, I will make sure goes back in actual improvements.
Sure.
Well, I, I love the idea of saving money. I just don't want this suspended for an interminable period of time, because I want this part done.
Well, I don't believe anybody does.
I think all of us would.
If you can come back in two weeks and give us a report detailed, understanding where you're at, what you discovered, and then we can determine if it's worth waiting another 60 days.
Absolutely. I don't, I don't.
60 days, to me, is too long.
I don't believe that's a problem whatsoever.
Kenny, Ethan? And Mike Lisa said, it's not just about this park.
Yeah.
This is about, I mean, if we're asking a question for all things in the future, too. I mean, this, this will answer a lot of questions. I mean, and honestly, I had this question a year ago, but I didn't believe it. I was like, they can't do all that. And then, when I had another person who works for a totally different company tell me the exact same thing, I was like, well, maybe I should, like, at least ask about it. I mean, that's, I think that's my job, isn't it?
I'm just wondering, is this not something you normally do? I mean, I, don't you all vet these things? That's why, that's why I'm perplexed, because have we not vetted this before?
I don't think it's a blame game.
One at the time.
I'm not blaming. I'm trying to figure out if we've not, if we don't vet this.
Actually, we did it something similar when we did the memorial park for the Bevra family, where we hired, we hired a, Scott Esmond, former Parks Director, hired a consultant. And then, based on the fact that we had entities that were providing labor and materials, his responsibility included not only the design, but also to coordinate with those entities that were donating either time or materials to that important project that helped with the healing in our community. So, that was probably the last time we did that, and was a smaller project. This is gonna be, you know, several million dollars, so it's a lot larger. But it's certainly something that I think it's worth looking at and coming back and reporting to council in two weeks. And if we think that it may, and here's what, here's what I'll, I'll make sure that we provide. We'll be able to tell you in two weeks where we're at. And then, if, then we will tell you, that may include, it may take us another 60 days before we're able to actually come back with you with a revised, revised RFP. And then, the council can make the decision whether or not you want to go forward as the traditional way, or you want to delay it because there may be potential savings.
I'm, I'm good with that. We'll come back in two weeks. And we'll go, pick up more right, right now. I'd make that motion to table this for two weeks.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Johnny. Roll call. Yes?
Yes.
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 Point of order, are you wanting us to use this system or the voice vote system?
Because it's coming up now.
It's showing up for a vote.
It is showing up?
Uh huh.
Well, it, it is showing up now, though.
No, you don't have to do both.
Nope, nope.
No.
That's okay.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't plowing the same ground.
I just wanna say one thing. I, we, we have some superstars in engineering construction. And Kenny Schwab knows the code back and forth. So, between Ethan, and Charlie, and Kenny, and Travis, we can, we can drill down on this and come back in two weeks.
Well, and I think that's something, when we go to our conferences and stuff, and we talk to vendors, and we, we get to know them and learn what they do, that's, that's a, I mean, when I was a new council, that's exactly what would happen, is you'd hear, you can do what, you know, and, but, in government, you always do things the way you always do them, right? This is how we do it. So, it's fine that we...
Well, and there's our, our, the, what is it called? The governance, anywhere you can go and drill down and look at what we've found things? That came from me talking to one of them.
Open Gov.
Open Gov, talking to one of them, and bringing it to the council, and it was approved. So, I mean, I know it, but I'm just, I'm just perplexed why this hasn't been done before. That's my question.
Well, from my, my perspective is, is that what you're being told, they cannot always accomplish. To work within, obviously, we have, we have statutes, we have rules and regulations that we have to work, work within, in order to accomplish what's being suggested. And that's something that, obviously, we haven't been able to get there. It's worth looking at, 'cause we're only talking about a two-week delay. If council decides that it could take, and Kenny's gonna be realistic in telling you that, you know, to redo everything, it could be 60 days, it could be 90 days, then you get to make the call, if you're willing to do that, if there is a potential savings, which could go back in improvements. If not, council may determine, like you looked at the wall a couple of times, I hate to bring that subject up, and don't throw anything at me, was after, after one specification, we went back and redesigned it, and then the council picked another design, and so far, it's working.
Thanks, Michael.
Positively there, huh?
Okay. Moving to item 9C, consideration discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute resolution number 1451, a resolution to request programming of federal fiscal year 2024. Travis Small.
Mayor, Council, Travis Small, Engineering and Construction Department. The next three items that you're going to be seeing are related to federal transportation funding that's made available through INCOG every year. INCOG has provided an application form to the entities in the COG that can be submitted. This year, INCOG is accepting four applications from ever, any entity that would like to submit. You have before you three items that we've chosen from a list of items that we have, or projects that we have, that we feel will score very highly with INCOG. The first one is the Houston Street Project widening from Knight Street to Old Highway 51. This is a, a project that we have well under design, and we feel it'll, it'll score high, so we would like the council's approval and resolution to send this in for an application.
Is there any discussion? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Sorry.
It doesn't matter.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Motion passes. Item 9D, consideration discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute resolution number 1452, a resolution to request programming of federal fiscal year 2024 Tulsa Urbanized Area Surface Transportation Funds. Travis.
As I mentioned previously, this is the second item. Again, we, we scored this particular project, and we believe that this one will score very highly in the INCOG's system. So, we would ask, at this point, council approve the resolution for the 23rd Street widening from Albany to Omaha, which would include the bridge project.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 1452, and authorize its execution.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call. One more. Item 9E, consideration discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute resolution 1454, also the same.
Again, this is the third and final one for, for this evening. As I said, there are four applications. I do have a fourth that will be coming forward at another time. But these were the three that were prepared for tonight. This particular project, again, we, we feel is a, is a good opportunity to submit application. It's the 37th Street Widening Project from Kenosha to Albany. And again, we would ask council's approval to submit this resolution.
Motion to approve it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right. 9A, 9F. Thank you, Travis. Consideration discussion and possible action on presentation of recommended methods to improve reliability of and emergency response times to gated areas throughout the city. Michael Spurgeon.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Council. Good evening. I do have a, a PowerPoint presentation and a brief video that I would like to show the governing body, if I have your indulgence to do so. Get things queued up here.
Presentation first, or the...
Let's see, the presentation first. So, the presentation, as the mayor mentioned, the agenda item, concerns assess, assessing gated communities within our, in our city. Next slide, please. "In the summer of 2021, we, being the administration, at the request of a member of the governing body, began discussing the potential benefits from enhanced equipment, and also the need to update our ordinances to allow for a shorter and more reliable response time in the event of emergency within the gated communities of our community. As a part of this process, my office received input from the Broken Air Police Department, the Broken Air Fire Department, community development, our IT, my staff. Our goal was to look at how we could minimize the response times and ensure reliable access to gated communities in an emergency situation." It's not, it's, it's not when, it's not if, it's when. So, this is extremely important for us. Next slide, please. "Right now, we have 53 gated accesses within the community. This includes commercial gates, city gates, and 44 residential gates, neighborhoods, or apartment complexes. Each HOA is required to provide a new code to community development on an annual basis. There's also Knox boxes, which essentially, essentially, used by the Broken Air Fire Department only. There are 37 Knox boxes locations throughout the community. Eighty-four percent of all residential gated communities currently have a Knox box installed. It is currently not required for gated communities to have a Knox box installed, which is the number one concern of why we're actually looking this, and it prompted the discussion. Each gate must meet international fire code regulations." Here are some highlights to our current code. "Access to all emergency and service delivery vehicles shall be guaranteed at all entrances, police, fire, ambulance, stormwater streets, utilities, and general services, refuse pickup." So, that's really required. You have to provide us with access to the services that we provide. "All current security code, passwords, numbers, and other devices necessary to allow for instant access shall comply with the requirements as set out by the ordinance." So, as council's seen, there, there are requirements that everyone must meet. Next slide, please. "This is a concern to the administration, and I think that while the two solutions we're gonna present you, the second one, obviously, is, it will be our recommendation to council. I think it's important that we upgrade the technology within our community to be able to provide access to our citizens when needed." So, the first recommendation, which is a very standard recommendation, is an ordinance amendment for the Knox boxes. Through an ordinance amendment, require Knox boxes at all gates. This will require the 14 locations that currently lack the box to install one, and all future and new gated locations to install one as well. The cost of this is approximately $115, plus the labor to have it installed. The recommendation is that this would be an HOA expense for all current and future locations." Next slide, please. "Now, there are some advantages and disadvantages of the Knox box requirements. When you look at this very holistically, advantages, reliable backup and plan for Broken Air Fire Department if all this fails, and it's a low cost to install and maintain. The disadvantages, remains only accessible to the Broken Air Fire Department, generally does not reduce response time. Using the Knox box requires BAFD personnel to access physical key that is locked inside vehicle, then they must exit the vehicle to unlock the gate. So, while, while requiring it is, is somewhat of an upgrade, it's nowhere we're, we're near. We believe that it's needed." Next slide, please. Here we go. "This is the one that is actually being recommended for the council consideration. First, we have the ordinance implementation and for updated gated access system. We would like to install something very similar to the video that you're going to see through a competitive bidding process, a click-to-enter-gate-access system. It can be implemented on any power gates that currently utilize gate operations and coded entry. It allows designated users the ability to enter gated communities using either a vehicle-mounted radio, or a handheld portable radio, that the majority of city vehicles, in this case, necessary staff, are already equipped with at this time. Use the current radio, making the system not only cost-effective, but all easy to use in the field. All city fleet could utilize the system, authorized radios would be programmed, and then we would be able to open the gates as needed." So, immediately, if we were to do this, we would have improved response time to, to all of our gated communities." Next slide, please. Now, this, there is, there is an upfront cost that's associated with this. Now, I've worked closely, and I wanna thank the IT department, Scott Carr, for making his folks available, Mark Ketchum, who's here tonight. If there are any questions, technically, he and Scott could answer those. There's a $3,000 for the initial installation of receiver equipment needed at each location. This includes installation, hardware needs, et cetera, and will vary slightly based on the type of gate, based on the location. The life of the hardware is expected to be 10 to 15 years. The recommendation is that this would be a city expense for all current gates. So, obviously, we would have to upgrade those existing gates. And all HOA enters expenses for all new gated communities and ongoing replacement upgrades and maintenance needs would be the responsibility of the homeowners' associations. We've estimated, and I, I'm, this, right now, is just an estimate. It could be higher, it could be a little lower. $3,000 to 53 total gates is $159,000. One time of cost of about $800 for a new radio channel, so the estimated city investment would be about $161,000." Next slide, please. "The advantages to having this system are very, are very evident to me. Improved response times and the reliability of access. The disadvantages is the cost of implementation and the ongoing maintenance, and the fact that, you know, once you get into this, all of the associations are gonna be responsible for upgrading their technology. So, so if you have, you know, 53 right now, each of them would be responsible to upgrade that technology when it comes time to be, to be replaced. And it's, and it... And, you know, you think about it, I think if we educated them on the importance of this, that is something they could certainly work into, I believe into their budgets to be able to provide that improved access to their communities." Now, before I show the video, I just wanted to give the council generally what the implementation steps would be. If the council supports moving forward, we would first do a public education campaign to all the HOAs of the proposed plan for installation of the new technology. We would share the rationale, concerns for safety, reliability, and consistent access. Obviously, I don't recommend we do this unilaterally. I think there should be discussions amongst all those that are interested. Then, if council's in agreement to move forward after we have some discussions, then it would require you to amend all applicable city codes that would make this something that was a requirement, which obviously requires you, you know, for you to debate and discuss. We would then, if council moved to the next step, we would prepare bid specifications for the new technology. We would award it for services and installation. We would complete the installation. This would be an expense that, if you're so in agreement, we would put in the 2023 capital approval budget, and then we would monitor and evaluate the results for the investment that we made to be able to justify how it has improved, you know, access to the gates. And so, that is the presentation. I would like to show you a short video that demonstrates a community that is utilizing some technology that we would be considering.
Hello, I'm Chief Chris Henry, your Assistant Fire Marshal. In community risk reduction, your safety is number one. Currently, when you go into a gated community, you have to use a NOX switch. Starting January 1st this year, we put in our local amendments implementing what's called a click-to-enter, and that is a device that's keyed off of your radio, your portable radio or your onboard radio. What's that mean safety-wise? Means you no longer have to get out of your apparatus to get into a gated community. Moving forwards down the road, we'll try to get them in existing communities, but for now, it's going to be anything that's new in any existing communities that are replacing the gates. So, how it works is you approach a gate, you look up on the pole, you'll see the box, click to enter. You see a green light on there, means it has power. You take your onboard radio or your portable radio, you switch to TAC 14A. To activate the device, key your mic, hold it keyed until the light comes on, and the light goes off, and then release. Then, the light will start blinking, and the gate will open. So, I clicked to enter. Well, the two is for two minutes. The gate will remain open for two minutes, so if you have any follow-on apparatus, they won't have to come back out, use a NOX switch, or key up the radio again. At end of two minutes, it automatically closes. Not where now you may have to get out and shut the gate with the key switch. That's no more. As you approach the gate in the engine, approximately 80 feet away, you can transmit, hit transmit from 14A, and the gate should open. From this point forward, when you come to headquarters for fire grounds training, all you have to do is approach the gate, 14A, the gate will open, two minutes later, it will shut. It's that easy. Click to enter will be your primary entrance way. The switch on the NOX switch, that'll be your secondary. And then, make sure when you switch to 14A, the gate opens, switch back to whatever TAC channel your call's on. If there is no click to enter, the NOX switch is your primary. If the click to enter doesn't operate, then you have to go to your NOX switch. For any questions, you can contact me, fire-marshall@pbc.gov.org.
Thank you for showing that video. If there are any questions the council may have, and I asked any of the member staff that looked at this to answer.
So, you're going to require all future gated communities to install this at their cost? Is there, what's the thinking behind the city footing the bill for HOAs on something that's their responsibility to install? I mean, if this is safer, it makes their residents safer. The residents benefit, but the city as a whole doesn't benefit, other than being able to access it. So, I like the idea, but I would want to know more about why the taxpayers are footing the bill versus the HOA.
I mean, that was something that we could certainly consider, is asking if they would be willing to cost-participate, and we could certainly do that. Honestly, this is a very important public safety matter to me, and I just don't know, because of the cost and the fact that they do have access, if everyone would see the importance of this from our perspective of being able to get into their communities in a more timely fashion. And so, requiring it for the future makes a lot of sense, and I think the goodwill on our part is actually paying for the ones that are here now to show our commitment to public safety, to help them, but make them understand is this initial investment is, will be on us, but all future upgrades or maintenance or replacement will be on the actual HOA.
That was going to be my question, was the replacement. I forgot how many years it was.
10 to 15.
10 to 15 years. If it's, you know, if it's not HOA, that we would replace it, but if it was HOA, would it be an old one or a new one? Whether they had to put it in or they put it in, you know, whenever, who's going to replace them? Are we going to replace them, or is the homeowners' association going to do that?
Well, these are all private, so the ordinance would dictate exactly what they would have to do going forward. So, to me, if the council agreed to put this in the budget, we would go through all the processes and the action steps to complete this, and the ordinance would say that any community that's received this technology would be responsible for maintaining it after the warranty is passed and so forth, but any replacement or upgrades would be the responsibility of the HOA. So, it is initial investment the city would be making for, under the auspices of the importance of public safety.
So, we're planning, I would assume, like a campaign to hit all the HOAs and get them all the information. What if half of them don't want to do it, or more than half of them say they don't want to do it? What do we do?
No, the existing ones, I thought the existing ones were going to put it in. If we both put it in, we'd put in the existing ones.
But they'd have to agree to take it on.
They'd still have to agree. I mean, unless, that's what I'm saying, if we pass an ordinance that requires them to do it, why do we have to fund it if they're required to do it?
I think it's a great system, and obviously, it would help our public safety. Just seems like there's a lot of legwork to just say we're putting this in, or, you know.
What is the justification here of spending public dollars on private property?
I mean, how do we, like, are we allowed? I mean, I didn't think...
That's my question.
I didn't think we were, but I didn't think we were allowed to do that.
Well, we have an ordinance, we have an ordinance that requires them to do this, and so if we have an ordinance that said all new communities have to put this technology in, we can do that because we're requiring them to do something now. So, if we amend the ordinance that says all existing communities have to have this technology and the city is willing to pay for it, with the ordinance saying that any upgrades, maintenance, or replacements is on the responsibility to get, for the HOA to meet the requirements of the city ordinance, is how I would justify it.
I guess I'm making myself, I'm not clear, and I apologize. My question is, can we not make that an ordinance that they're required to pay so that the taxpayers don't have to...
You can.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, absolutely.
Or shared.
What, I mean, or shared or something, because relatively speaking, these gated communities tend to be the more affluent communities, and they tend to be, and they tend to benefit usually anywhere from 200 to 100 homes versus a city with 36,000 households. I'm trying to figure out, we're asking all the taxpayers to foot the bill for these neighborhoods, and I'm just wanting to understand the reason.
There is, there's multiple ways that we could do this. You could ask them if they would cost-participate. Absolutely, we could do that. Some may choose to do that. Others may not, and so it becomes a matter of policy. Does the council, let's say you have a handful out of 53, let's say 25 out of 53 do not want, do not want to pay for it, but the other ones do. This is where...
If they have to, they have, I mean, that's what I'm saying, can we require them to do this?
I think it's confusing to our public safety people if they're not, either we do it or we don't do it. And I'm certainly in favor of doing it. I couldn't believe the homeowners' association wouldn't be in favor of it.
That's what I'm...
But, and they can't pull up and say, well, now I need to know, is this going to be one, which one lock device is going to be, so it needs to be installed in all of them.
It does, that's true. To me, my recommendation is, and Councilman Udi has a great point, you know, the taxpayers would be funding this, I just think improving the access for all of our services has a value, and I think by doing this shows our effort to try to improve public safety. If the council is desirous to actually ask them all to cost-participate, we could certainly do that. It becomes down to a situation where you can't get 100% on anything. So, if we get down to where there's those that will pay and there's those that would prefer not to, it really comes down to what council wants to do with the ordinance.
Well, if it's an ordinance, it's required, so I'm not sure I understand, can we require them to install this at their cost, under the law?
I believe you can, it's just a matter, you know, you will probably get pushback from those, which I was trying to avoid by actually coming up and paying for this initial cost.
I know, but will I get pushback from someone who doesn't have a gated community saying, well, I have to pay for their gate?
You probably could, Councilmember. I mean, that's a possibility. That's why, you know, this is a tough situation to ask folks to pay for something, because some people may feel like what they provided is acceptable and that we should work within the system.
The cost savings that the Vice Mayor is seeking for the park, which is a wonderful thing, because that would allow to invest that back in the park, that serves the whole city. These gates serve that neighborhood, and I want them to be safe, but I'm struggling with the idea of the city paying for that community's gate. We didn't pay for them to install it. They get to elect whether they want to be a gated community, and all power to them.
The gate, I'm sorry.
But I'm just struggling with the city paying for a relatively small number of...
I know.
The whole taxpayer base subsidizing that. I would think if we're going to require it, it's reasonable, that's just me, but it's reasonable for us to be willing to help fund some of it and defray costs, or maybe install it and allow them to pay it out so the homeowners are not coming up with a big hickey, but for the taxpayers to foot the bill for a relatively small neighborhood, I'm just struggling with asking them to do that.
You know, it's certainly a valid, it's a valid question, and it's something that the council needs to decide. I think that we at least need to move forward with implementing the program. How we go about it is what I need guidance on. I'm proposing that we pay for it, and Councilman Udi's got some valid points, and I know everybody else has some concerns, too. I just really need to know, number one, do we want to do the program? And if so, then how would the council like to proceed with the public meetings we're going to have to explain to them what is being considered and what their participation would be?
I just want to say something. I just have a question. The box, we currently have the lock boxes now, so we pull up, we have to get out, we have to unlock. Who paid for those?
They did. We don't have an ordinance requiring all of them to have them on there. We'd have to amend the ordinance to put, but those are only for the fire department.
Okay, but all of the gated communities have those?
Not, no.
That's frustration.
So, they make that decision?
They have to provide us with access, if they're, it's a gated community, they have to provide community development with access, with the access code, and we have to distribute that to everybody, and it can change periodically, and there are some challenges with everyone having the correct code to be able to gain access.
I guess what I'm saying, and I think is, if you elect to be in a gated community, that comes with some level of cost, and I just hate to have every taxpayer paying for a small neighborhood's gate.
I guess the way I would justify it is we're changing, we're kind of changing the rules. So, like, the people that already have gated communities, they already have it, but now we're saying, now you have to do this, but from this point forward, any new gated communities will have to pay for it themselves.
And I agree with that, which is why I think we need to make it easy, why I think we, the cost sharing is an option. It becomes, but there needs to be skin in the game for both, because this is primarily benefiting that community, that gated community, and no one else.
Are there other technology companies that have this kind of system?
I believe they're similar, and we would have to, because of the cost, we'd have to go out for proposal.
And then, if the system doesn't work, they pull up and for whatever reason, it's out, it's not working, they still have the lock box, so they would, those will stay in place. On some.
And all these gates are crash gates, aren't they?
Yes, our fire department has the ability, our department has the ability to get in if we need to.
And I think what the issue is now for the police and fire, from what I've been told, is like, it's kind of like your house. You can put in your alarm code, and then maybe you have to do a pound afterwards, but then some you do a pound, and then you do the alarm code, so it delays our police and fire to get in to help them.
And I agree, I think this should be required. I think the program should be done. I don't know why our ordinance has, I mean, this is, I guess I need to read the ordinance again, because I assumed it was required that they had to provide this, but I'm struggling with us paying for it. That's my struggle.
Yeah, I understand.
How are they powered? Are they in, like, how are these boxes powered? Do we know?
See if I can get some help from Scott.
While Scott's coming up here, does PD have access?
Not to the NOX.
It sounded like everybody would have access.
They do, well, with the current system, everybody has a code. That, like I said...
That may or may not work.
In this recommended system, it is powered by a power line there at each of the gated community. It is battery-backed up should power be cut or power is lost, and, again, the access is from a radio frequency, so as long as it has power, it works.
And I don't think the debate is about whether the system is appropriate. I mean, I agree with Counselor Ford, this is, this should be done. Again, my, so implementing the program, I don't have issue with. Funding it is the question I think we need to explore more before we finalize an ordinance.
I have one other comment that was an earlier question I heard, and I'll get out of here and let that be the issue. The, I think the question was about this particular choice and this particular service. In terms of that, there are some other solutions. They're much more expensive, and from the IT department's side of things, this is the most doable solution with a vendor that's proven to work, and it represents a technological platform that can be applied for a lot of different potential utilizations, but in this particular case, this one seems to allow the fastest access for a vehicle, police or fire that's able, and again, police have no access necessarily from the NOX box side of things, but a vehicle does not even have to stop to respond in a public safety situation. I'll go sit down unless there's any other IT question.
Thanks, Scott.
Can you run faster?
Really, he's like, get the heck out of here.
So, it really comes down to what's council's pleasure in terms of any potential, either the city pay for it or some type of cost participation, or asking them to pay for the whole thing.
Well, I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve, require the implementation of this program. I'm not prepared to make a motion to approve the city paying for it today. So, if you're needing, from my perspective, if you're needing direction of, is this something that we develop and create an ordinance? Yes. If the ordinance has proposed the city paying it, we can debate that further, but the program itself, I think, in keeping with what everyone on this council's saying, is yes, this is a good program. I just think there needs to be more discussion about how it's paid for.
And I have to, I mean, I love this program, but I have to stay consistent in my, I'm just like sitting here, I'm like, okay, yes, I want to make it easier for our police and our fire, I want them to be able to get in as fast as they can everywhere they go, but I, I just, I don't feel comfortable having someone that lives in a not, I mean, you know, in a $100,000 house, paying for somebody's technology that lives in a half million or more dollar house. It just seems weird. It doesn't seem, I don't like it.
What's happening to this? If the council's in favor of actually exploring this, then we, then I ask that you make a motion that we explore this, and then we move to the next step of having some discussions with those gated communities to discuss the importance of this and that what's being considered, and then have a discussion about cost participation.
And I think there is, I agree, I mean, I could, that's, I thought that was a motion I was making, essentially, but if it's not, then it is. But I think the question is, let's explore how we can help them fund this without doing it solely on the backs of the rest of the taxpayers. So, if there's, if the city installs it, can develop grants, if there's payments where the HOA can do it over several years, that's all on the table. I don't want to make it difficult, but I don't want the rest of taxpayers to pay for a neighborhood's improvement. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
And it's about $3,000, I think it said, per each gate, and... And, and the gated communities may have no problem at all taking care of that.
How many neighborhood, because I know we have 53 total gates, but, and then I know a portion of those were residents, but not all of the, I mean, some of those were apartments, so.
I think there's about 44 I saw, if I remember correctly.
There were actually homes.
Yes.
But for like apartments, if you have, if you have 200 units in your apartment or 300 units in your apartment, a one-time, a one-time fee when you've signed your lease for $30, you know, I mean, you're getting close to being, to paying for that. And, and it's not the, I'm just, I think we need to explore that before.
I think we can find ways to, you know what I mean, have them to pay it out. You know, we do that a lot. We require, if they come into, annex into the city, you know, we run sewers, they pay for it over a period of time. I think, and I'm just as concerned with the replacement of them in 10 to 15 years. So there needs to be something worked out on the financing, but without question, I think it needs to be easy and all of them work alike for public safety to get in and know exactly how to get in. So I agree with working out the funding, even if the homeowners association didn't, wasn't happy about it, you know, we can still, we can still do it. So I say go ahead and we'll work the financing out for that.
Yeah.
Sorry I was being so generous.
Well, I appreciate your heart.
Well, you've, you've asked what I've, you proved what I'm asking for and that is to explore the program. And, you know, maybe I'm being over conservative in terms of they're willing to cost participate. Maybe they will and maybe I'll be able to come back to you and say, has everyone agreed to do 50%? And then the council makes the decision, are you willing to do something? So let it, let's get at least the public education portion started and then we come back and I can update the council sometime in the next few months.
This does nothing but benefit those neighborhoods. I mean, I, there's all kinds of statements they may realize from insurance costs and other things because now they have faster, speedier access from public service and the postal service and who knows, these days even Amazon. So I'm kidding, but I think, I think, you know, it's a good program. Let's just evaluate how we pay for it.
Will do.
So does that need to be in the motion? I made the motion, kind of. So make the motion to proceed with the city manager's recommendation subject to further evaluation of the financing and funding of the process.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. Roll call.
I'm sorry, I forgot to click.
Item 9G, consideration, discussion and possible approval of two proposed measures focused on evaluating and administering the most efficient and cost-effective means to provide robust and substantial services to the senior citizen population of Broken Arrow to include two city council members to be added to the Broken Arrow seniors board and the creation of a senior center, senior citizen services advisory committee. Wow.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Mr. Council. I want to tell you a little story here and you may remember this. It's only been a little over two years ago. We went to the National League of Cities back in November of 2019 before COVID hit. And I know at least Councilmember Parks and Councilmember Udi went to the Senior Citizen Center in San Antonio. And I can't remember if the mayor or vice mayor went, but I know they were offering different tours. Anyway, while we were.
We didn't go to the senior.
Okay, while we were doing a little debriefing, both Councilmember Parks and Udi said to me is that, you know, we really need to look at our model. It was, it was just a brief discussion when we get back and see, you know, could we expand our services because San Antonio's program, obviously their largest city, was extremely impressive. And so I said, okay, that's something maybe we can look at discussing with council in 2020. And then, then the pandemic hit and obviously that was not something that we were able to get to for many obvious reasons. A few months ago, I had a conversation with Councilman Parks, who currently is on the, on the board, and I just mentioned to him, hey, what do you think about looking at that model like we talked about a couple of years ago now that things are starting to open up? And obviously him being on the board, his answer was, yeah, let's look at it. So what is before you tonight is, is as the mayor mentioned when she read the, the item is there's, there's two, there's two things I'm asking for council's consideration of. And I just want to say that before I ask you specifically for your thoughts, if you take a look at, and I know you all know this, Broken Arrow community, it continues to grow very rapidly and it's important to consider the quality of life for all of our citizens. And I think that we do that all the time with the multimillion dollar investment with expanding the, the senior center and the other projects that we have going on. According to the 2020 census, about 50% of Broken Arrow residents or approximately 17,000 are age 65 or older and they're a very vital demographic with, with our community. And as you think about the services we provide to seniors, what seniors look like today will probably be different what seniors look like 10 or 15 years from now. And so from my perspective, we're studying so many things about how we provide services to our city, i.e. a public transportation to look at how we could use existing dollars to better serve our community or to serve those that are underserved within our city. Secondly is that we are looking at some type of rideshare or trolley, I'll call it, to see if there's a way that those that are in our hotels, we could get them to our large commercial retail areas to actually support our businesses while they're here in Broken Arrow. You look at the other initiatives, we did the initiative for Elmen, New Orleans and look, look at the results that's reaping, the Rose District back in the early 2000s and what that has reaped. There's a, there's a, there's a lot of citizen involvement. One of the areas that I think is worthy of studying is how we provide services to seniors within our community. Right now, as you know, we have a, what I would call the public-private model where the city owns the building or soon to be buildings and we have a use agreement with an entity that actually provides those services. And then the agreement outlines the services we provide them, which we are providing either contributions for certain services as well as in-kind, in-kind contributions for such items as utilities. And so we have a true public-private model. I think that it's time for the council, as we're looking at everything else, to look at how we provide senior services to the Broken Arrow community. Is that, is that in a, the current, continue with the current model by possibly expanding some of the services that we provide? And then we determine, does the private sector or public sector fund those services? Do we look at a more municipal model where at some point we would transition to the city actually providing those services? And what effect would that would have if the city, and the cost for us to do it? Would all the same money that they receive from private sources be available to us? If not, then we'd have to make up those differences if we wanted to continue the same level of services? We also have an advisory committee that would look at long-term, what recommendations, not only for the model, but what services provide. And as the council members know, last year we added a position in the Parks Department that's focusing on programming because for the most part, we have been a more sports-oriented parks, traditional parks and recreation entity. And one of the things we talked about with Matt when he joined a couple of years ago was expanding our, our recreation activities at our various community centers to provide the, what I would call the non-traditional type of activities for folks to be able to, besides softball, basketball, the, what's it called? The pickleball and volleyball and so forth. And so we're looking at how, how are we going to do it? I don't want to overlap. And so what we're going to provide through the, through the city, let's make sure we're partnering with whatever model we're using so we're not duplicating service or maximizing the dollars that we have. And so the second part of my recommendation is the creation of an advisory committee, which will be made up as I've outlined here, where I'd like to see and recommend two members of the council to serve on that advisory committee. And then each of you, as you've done traditionally on other types of activities or committees, one person from each of you, that would be seven. And then the senior board, activities board that we partner with would provide two members from their board. And then my position would report, would appoint two with one of those having specific knowledge in the area of senior living. Because I believe you need an individual in there that can understand the, the day-to-day lives of seniors and how important having an activity center would be to them. So you'd have 11 member, and I'm speaking generally and obviously there's a lot of details to work out. You'd have an 11-member board that could probably start meet, meeting in April and they could wrap up and provide some, based on the guidance I would give them, which the goal is look at the current model. And that would include also going out and look at other private public models as well as looking at some of the public models within the, within the state. Probably would, we would rent a van that's, that's, would accommodate everyone and make a couple of field trips to different places around the state. And there are some really good public models and I understand there's some pretty good private public models that we could go look at. We have the Parks Department come in, we have the, the senior citizens board and their administrator actually explain to the committee what they do, what service they provide, where they get their funding. And then they come back, just like the solid waste committee, and come back with a recommendation to the city council on, on the model. What model do we believe would work best for our community that's the most cost-effective, that's sustainable? And then we worked with the current senior board to implement whatever decision is made by the council based on the recommendation of the advisory committee. And that's something I think we could get done with the support of staff in, in about nine months with the goal, my goal would be to ask them to get their report to the governing body by December 31st, 2021, two, excuse me. The other thing, which I think is, is an important first step, is I would like to see the council members consider adding two council, two of, two of your own to the actual current board. And I believe that would provide some additional information about how the, how the, the board in the center operates and it provides you some governance over, over the activities, which I think is extremely important for any entity that we actually support or fund. And in fact, I think we probably should discuss the possibility of adding a council member or two to the museum. We have, we have support for, I believe, many of the other, other entities that are in our buildings, having some in the museum would probably something council should consider. So I, so those are the two recommendations is short-term, which could actually turn out to be long-term is have two council members. It'd be great if we could identify those two tonight because then we could work to amend the use agreement because I believe the use agreement should reflect the fact that two members of the council would be on there. And then the long-term would be the, the formation of advisory committee that could study this and come back to the council with recommendations. Now, I will just let you know is that last week, I, I asked the, the current president, Yvette Martinez, if she would pull together several members of the advisory committee or the executive board, excuse me. And I met with her along with Councilmember Parks, who is a current member, and also Councilmember Udi, who had, who had been on the board previously, Councilmember Ford had just rolled off. And so they were, had many questions, obviously, and they understand what we're trying to accomplish here. And they said that they felt this is something that, that they felt good about and supporting and looking at what, how, what they do, how we could possibly expand it. Because their goal is the same of ours, is that providing the most cost-effective and efficient services to our seniors. That's, that's their goal, that's our goal. And they were interested in looking at the advisory committee. And they also said they would be very willing to consider the two people, the two additional council members. And so I'm really looking to have this discussion with you on what you think about both of those recommendations.
If I may, I've given a lot of thought to this because like Councilor Ford, Councilor Parks, we've served on, on that board. The senior community is extremely important and they've had a very, the pandemic has hit them harder than anyone because some, it was closed for a while and, and, and so a lot of thought and prayer on this. And, and my thought in this is I like both these ideas and, and speaking with the members of the board that Council, Councilor Parks and I had the privilege of meeting with the other day, there was, there was interest in this as well. And so if I may be so bold, I had some thoughts. I know Councilor Ford and I have served on the board in the past. I would like it to be considered that Councilor Ford and I would serve on the advisory committee that is formed of the 11 people, the two counselors. And that Councilman Parks, who already serves on the board and has done a very good job, was their chair last year and very, very difficult year, continue to serve. And then I would like to suggest that Councilor Gillespie serve as the other board member if, if the board amended it to reflect two members of the council because the mayor has all she can say grace over. But, and, and that was my thought process because Councilor Ford and I've had, we, we understand the current model, we've worked with it, we've led it, we've, all three of us have been chairs, chairs of that board. And so I think she and I would be good resources in, in understanding that model and working together. Council, Councilor Parks has just done an amazing job. It's been a tough year, but he's done it, taken, taken on it. And I think having some fresh eyes and, and I know Councilor Gillespie has a heart as much as she talks about her grandmother and her family, I think she would be a great, a great asset to the, to the board. So that's my thoughts. I've given a lot, as you can tell, I've probably given it way too much thought, but this, this, the senior center is just far too important and I think this initiative could, could really, we may find out we've got the best model in the world and, and we may find half a dozen ways to improve it and build upon it. But I think it, it's, it's obligatory that we participate in this so that we can make sure that our seniors are getting the best possible services. And I mean, I truly feel that. And so those are my thoughts.
And, and I currently serve on the Veterans Center Board and the Military History Board as in city entities. And, and I agree, I think Vice Mayor would be.
I would be, I would be honored to serve on the, on this board because I think I'm passionate about.
What do you want to serve with Johnny?
I would love to serve with Johnny, but we haven't gotten to serve together on a, on a board, I don't think. I can think of him, Johnny.
Well, you know, my comments are, I'm excited about this. I just feel like, in all honesty, I've, I've visited with other senior centers across the state. I haven't gone to their location, but I feel like that they are quite a bit different than ours. We're a growing community, one of the grownest in the state, and I think it's imperative that we stay up and make sure we provide the most we can for our senior centers. And I've already, always been in favor of that. In fact, I was on the council when we bought the, and I've said this before, Arrow Heights Church and signed the paperwork for the city as a vice mayor at that time for the senior center. So I'm excited. I do think that I'm in, certainly in agreement. Granted, I'm on the board, each one of these has been on the board, but there's no requirement from them that to have a counselor on that board. And I really feel like with the amount of money, we've got several million dollars invested in the buildings that we're providing, a minimum of $150,000 a year that we provide for utilities and all of that, that for the sake of transparency is that we have representation on that board. And I think it's simple, I think they will agree with it, but if it's part of the contract, I, I know they will agree with it. So if you add it to the contract. Michaela serves on the board as a liaison, which is good.
She serves on all the boards as liaison.
Certainly, certainly good. So I think she would appreciate not being left alone on that. I do rotate off of it. Their rules are, they're, they serve three years and then you can serve another three years and then you roll off. You have to roll off for a year. So my term to roll off is in December. So you might keep in mind that we'll need to appoint somebody else, you know, at that time because I won't be on there. But I'm excited, the committee, I'm really excited about that because I really wanted to be on it, but I really think my job is to stay on the board. I couldn't get off, I'd have to get off the board to be on the committee because I've already looked at some of it, but I won't give you any hints. So I will stay on the board and I'm excited to serve with Kristi on it. I think she will do a great job. And the first thing I thought of was her grandparents that she always talks about and doing that. So it is a great place to serve on the, the board. But I like both of these ideas and I support 100%.
And I agree. I, I think all of the entities that we have contracts with, we should have council for the exact reasons that Councilor Parks just spoke of.
I serve on Arts OK.
I'm on Broken Arrow neighbors.
Broken Arrow neighbors and there, it's important. That's another thing I couldn't think if you had, had yet had the privilege to serve on a, a, a board yet. So I thought that that would be a great.
Not one of the city's own.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah. And I thought it would be a great opportunity to, because this is a good one. The seniors, they are so proud of their facility, you're, you're proud to get to serve them. And I just, knowing the way you've talked about your family and, and that, I just, that popped in my head, I thought it'd be a great fit.
Thank you. I accept.
Good. So what, so what we have to do is the cleanest way to do this, Johnny, Councilmember Parks will stay on the board, on the board now would become a council member and then Vice Mayor Gillespie would be added. So, so at the next meeting, legal will bring forth an amendment to the use agreement that incorporates that in there. I'm going to talk to the president tomorrow if you pass the motion that will let her know that the council has requested that two members of the governing body be added to the, the senior advisory board for not knowing exactly what their exact title is.
She is exactly, she is the chairman of the board.
Chairman, okay, chairman.
Now, the president would be Sean. He's the CEO, he's the president.
Okay.
So you'd want to visit with Yvette.
Okay, I'll visit with her. And then it becomes a matter of how quickly we get started is how quickly the governing body members and myself can identify a person that we can bring back for either the March 15th meeting or the first meeting in April at the latest, if that works for everybody. Because I know obviously you've got to find someone. I am, one of my appointments will probably be someone from the young professionals of the chamber. I think it's important to have our, the younger generation to look at the service provided. I think that'd be a great way to get them involved as they've requested. And then I'm going to speak to one member of the board who can help me find someone from one of our communities that may be interested in serving, who actually works with seniors on a day-to-day basis. So if we can get that done, then we could actually get the committee seated probably sometime, I would say in April, and get them started.
We do have, our meeting I think is the 21st in March. So I think that would give us enough time to, I would thank, find our individual appointees to it.
Okay, that's right, we moved it back because of NLC.
Right.
Okay, yes.
Trevor, is it okay as part of the motion to approve the recommendation to also move with the council members that have been discussed today or would that need to be added out another day?
You could do that at this meeting. The title is broad enough to include the appointment of the two members. I would note though that Broken Arrow Seniors is a separate 501(c)(3) organization. They're an independent contractor under our use agreement, so any changes to their bylaws will need to be done in accordance with their articles incorporation. I don't have access to those.
Actually, I do.
Excellent.
But I think the, it is incumbent upon them to make the changes we request and we would hope that in a desire to work with us and to share our goal to benefit the seniors that they would find our strong recommendation helpful, so to speak.
Certainly. Procedurally, exactly what the city manager said, we could draft an amendment to the current use agreement that outlined that, you know, requirement, you know, for the ongoing of the agreement.
You might want to make, I think it comes up, you know, the next couple of months.
June 30th is when it expires, so the current agreement was renewed July 1st, 2021, expires June 30th, 2022.
Okay. I was just saying that possibly you might want to make it from that point, at least to the end of the year to coincide with this and me rolling off of their board because we need to appoint a new board member, a board member from the council at that time.
If you wanted it to wait until that time, we certainly could. I just would need to know.
No, I was thinking about making it now, but making it where we renewed January the 1st of '23.
I understand.
Can you do that?
I'll have to look at the terms of the termination provisions because as an instance, what we'd be doing would not, we wouldn't be enmending the agreement at that point, we'd be terminating it, we'd be ending it six months early. And I'll just need to look at the provisions of doing that.
Okay. If that's the case, then if I may, I would make a motion to approve the city manager's recommendations to include the request that two council members be appointed to the Broken Arrow Seniors Board of Directors, those council members being the continued service of Councilmember Parks and the appointment of Vice Mayor Gillespie. And that the advisory committee be formed with the two council members being myself and Councilor Ford.
Nice.
I second.
Have a motion and second, roll call.
Oh, I need to push the button, I'm sorry.
All right. Moving on to 9H, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a list of the city of Broken Arrow's priorities to present to Oklahoma members of Congress at National League of Cities Congressional Hill Day on March 16th, 2022 in DC.
So I know that you feel like this meeting's moving like molasses in the winter.
Sloth-like, yes.
Slow, okay. But the people's business take a lot of time and discussion, all right. Another story here. Obviously, one of the most important responsibilities a council member have outside of your traditional, the budget, appointment of a city manager, is legislation. And having the effect on a legislation, not only at the local level, but also being able to advocate on the state and federal level is extremely important as well. You do that by going to many conferences throughout the year to advocate on behalf of either for or against bills that may be considered that could be harmful to all Oklahoma cities, specifically Broken Arrow. And over the last couple of years, the council has gotten a lot more active. There's always been an active level at National League of Cities. I've seen an increase in the last five years of getting very active at the state level. And we have a lobbyist that tries to represent our interests, but it's great to see the council members engaging as well. You now have two members of the governing body on the Oklahoma Municipal League Legislative Committee, which means you're seeing a lot of communications because I think that is important when certain bills come out, that the council members, and there could be things on the agenda where you're actually voting on taking a position on a particular bill because it's important, it could have a negative or adverse effect to Broken Arrow, or it could be something we're in support of. And so as since all of you are going to NLC, which means that you're going to be visiting with our delegation, it was suggested that council members have a discussion and come up with a handful of important issues that you'd want to share with our delegation. And so what I put together for you is not an all-inclusive list of items that could be presented to our delegation and to let them know exactly where Broken Arrow stands on these issues. And all these in some way, shape, or form affect the quality of life and the governance of our city. And so obviously, probably the two most important infrastructure projects that we have are traffic and water and sewer. So the first two items, federal funding for improving interchanges at, excuse me, federal funding for improving interchanges at Elm Place and Highway 51 and Lynn Lane and Highway 51. As we've talked about, to complete the changes to the interchanges that are necessary at both these intersections could be $20 to $30 million minimum respectively. And so obviously, there's going to have to be federal assistance to make this happen. And so to me, that's something I would ask council to consider. And what we would do is whatever you decide to put on the list for this year, we'd put together an informational packet that you'd be able to take with you that just gives a snapshot of what the priorities are to Broken Arrow. Secondly, is that obviously we know another major expense for us going forward is water and sewer distribution improvements. Obviously, when you're looking at a growing community, we're having studies done right now in a couple of areas. One thing that's concerned to us that you hear a lot about is the federal government staying out of local zoning. There's always discussion about trying to nationalize, for lack of a better term, of actually the zoning. And to me, we believe, at least from the administration's point, that zoning should be, should remain local, under local control of the elected governing bodies and then the appointed planning commissions. We're at historic levels of inflation. Obviously, there's not a whole lot you can do when your delegation is in the minority, but I still think that it's important to state the effects that it's having on us. I was asked recently, is the inflation affecting the city? And the answer is absolutely yes. When you look at the cost of gas, for example, the cost of utilities and so forth. So like our citizens' businesses, we feel it as well. Supply chain bottlenecks, there are solutions, and I think that's something that should be considered. We certainly don't want any government overreach or any regulatory overreach on our city. Rising energy prices and domestic energy development, obviously, we're a state that we have a large industry and we need to protect that industry because it has such a huge part of our economy. And there's a couple of others that I'd put on there. I'm not sure if the council members have any more, if you want to limit this to the top three or five, but I certainly wanted to present this for your consideration.
I think one of the other things that I've noticed for a long time, especially in the area of infrastructure, is a lot of times the federal government, and for five years I've been harping on this with our delegation, but the federal government will award funds to states, will award funds for city projects, but it has to go through the state. The state takes a piece of it as administrative costs and literally all they're doing is putting it into one bank account and writing us a check out of another. And they take money that diminishes the amount of money we receive for our project. And I think that issue should continue to be addressed, that if it's for a municipal project, the needs for the state, and that's why we have groups like INCOG and things to do that so the state doesn't have to. And I think that's an issue that should continue to be addressed. I also think legislative fixes to address the confusion, not necessarily good or bad, but just the confusion around McGirt is going to continue to be a necessary thing.
I think that should be top priorities.
I mean, that is, you're right. There are legislative fixes that could help the tribes and help the municipalities understand what the rules are because right now there's a lot of confusion. And the legislator could fix it if they just would, our national legislator.
Been brought to them, yeah. And they're just not addressing them.
So those are two things, I think, cut out the middleman for our funding and address McGirt. I think those are two things that.
I love that we are putting together this list because what happens, and NLC will give you a list of things that they would like for you to talk to your legislators about, but they don't always align with our state or our city.
Exactly.
And so a lot of times they don't, I'll just say that. And in my real job, I do legislative lobbying for commercial real estate issues and we always get, we have our list of items, you know, we're rowing beetles. That's a big thing. But it's great to be able to walk in there and you have your one sheet full of your top priorities that you want to touch base with and get them taken care of.
I think a lot of these too go back to, each one of us will have our own advocacy group that we're with, you know, mine's with environment, energy. And a lot of these are talking points even from there. When we talk about water, you know what I mean, we talk about the quality of water, deliveries of water. So a lot of these talking issues are not only with our own, you know what I mean, group, legislators, but with our advocacy group. Probably the best way to make the solution that Scott was talking about is have another Ronald Reagan president because the money went directly to the city. So we just got a check from the federal government, it never went through the state. It was revenue sharing and we could spend it any way that we wanted back then.
There's a reason my daughter's named Reagan.
I like the idea of getting a packet, like having a packet so they can see it.
A leave behind.
Yeah, a leave behind for sure, yeah.
Because we don't agree with everything that NLC proposes.
In fact, there's been many times I've had to, this is what NLC says, but here's what I want you to know.
Here's the rest of the story.
So I think this is a good list. I do think that those two items belong on the list. If the council agrees, I think that belongs in the list.
I think this all comes back to, we want local control of our funds. We want, we know what's best for our citizens. And how could anybody in Washington possibly claim that they know better than we do? What is best for our citizens?
Yes, the government that governs closest to the people governs best.
Absolutely.
So does the council want to include everything going here plus the two that Councilmember Udi included, or do you want to limit it to five?
Well, and that leads to a question because I know it referenced that the mayor, the vice mayor, and Councilor Ford. In the past, when we would go attend these things, and Councilor Parks and I are busy when, on the Capitol Day, we're busy giving, helping the U City Council take a tour of the Capitol and advocating in different ways. But in the past, we had been led to believe that three council members could not present to, at the same time, they could meet at different times, but three council members because open records couldn't present to the legislatures, the legislators. And it seems silly that the vice mayor and the mayor would go and then Councilor Ford would have to come later. Can the three, or even if all five of us wanted to attend, can we all at the same time address, at a meeting of our legislators at this Washington DC meeting, can we address them all at the same time?
Since it's public.
Since it is published, I just want to make sure we're following local law, but at the same time being most productive in how we address our elected officials.
Yeah, so the guidance that I give on this is always informed by the attorney general opinions and also what, you know, the statute say. And so basically, if there is a quorum, which is if you can count more than three of you and there's a discussion of business that's impacting, you know, the public, then it needs to be noticed and there needs to be publication and the opportunity for folks, you know, to be there. You know, the conservative approach to it has been the historical approach, which would be, you know, the 2-2-1, that's why we do the 2-2-1 informational meetings, you know, that's why we've broken up, you know, different type of attendance, you know, at various things. And I know that might be an inconvenience just in terms of, you know, having everybody there and be able to have it done all at once, but from a more conservative reading of it, I think it's safer to do it how we've done it historically.
Okay.
But it's not illegal if it's an open meeting for three of us to be there.
Right, if it's, you know, if all requirements of the Open Meeting Act, which is it's published, people can attend, it's open, and then we do all the.
So as we do publish our appearance.
Right, notice of attendance.
We do publish that we will be attending in meetings on Capitol Hill.
Yes, sir.
If a citizen of Broken Arrow wished to get on a plane and fly there and go with us to that meeting, they are more than welcome and have every right.
They're certainly open to do that, absolutely.
Does that allow for three members or even all five of us to attend a meeting with Senator Anhoff or Senator Langford or Congressman Hearn?
I mean, if we can somehow, the problem that we have with that is it's not readily available for attendance by a regular member of the public simply because they can, you know, do that. It's obviously not a, you know, a convenient way for them to attend a meeting.
So as our attorney, what's your best advice? Because we're trying to follow the rule, but we also, again, want to be as efficient as we can with addressing our elected officials.
I understand. And my recommendation is that you do continue to do it as the 2-2-1 meetings. I think that's the most conservative approach and it's the safest approach.
Well, let me ask you this, Trevor, because I, is there a way to word the public notice that council members are going to be meeting? And if we knew the times when actually, because we have to set up times with the elected officials, we just can't go to Senator Anhoff or Senator Langford or any of the other congress members. If we could have noticed specifically, if it specifically said we're going to be meeting, council members would be meeting with Congressman Hearn on the 15th at 10:00 AM, could that be in the notice? So a majority of them could?
We can certainly do that. I mean, specifically when we do these notice of attendances, they're not necessarily contemplated under the act. It's not actually saying, you know, we're having a city council meeting, we're conducting the following agenda business at this location in Washington DC. I think the Open Meeting Act would require us to have meetings in a location that's readily accessible to the public. And so having a meeting that's scheduled to conduct city business in Washington DC, even though we give an agenda and we say exactly what time it will be and the location, I don't think that's going to meet the requirement of being readily accessible. So I don't think that solves it. I think what we do with the notice of attendance is an attempt to be transparent so that we can do the business of the city of, you know, attending the NLCs, the National League of Mayors, those conferences, those types of things that are important. Or even something that we do locally, such as attending a.
A banquet, a chamber banquet.
Absolutely. And so the intent there isn't to take action or to pass, but, you know, the attorney general's been very clear that it's the entire decision-making process, it's the information gathering process that they want to make sure that is open to the public and that can be attended by, you know, by the citizens. And so we're trying to do the best that we can to meet the spirit of that while allowing you to do what you need to do. But again, you know, I'm not the finer arbitrator of all these things. It's going to be the attorney generals and, you know, the citizens if they have a complaint about it.
Just to, I'm going to do a lawyer's trick to try to put words in your mouth, but your advice to us, if I understand it, is that the best practice is to do the 2-2-1 meetings with, even outside of it, even with this publication notice because of the fact that it can't be readily accessible?
I believe that's the safest route.
Okay.
And that might be considered a very conservative approach, but again, I'm doing my best I can to protect the council.
Moving on, I want to, we said, we said the McGirt would be like the top. I don't agree.
But they can fix things.
Well, but they can, but everyone's going to talk about McGirt that's from Oklahoma. And so I think we should be on the list, but I think things that are Broken Arrow should be like, I mean, if we can figure out federal funding for the interchanges at Elm Place and, I mean, I feel like every, I mean, I want to talk, I mean, I love talking about McGirt.
We're the only people who are going from Oklahoma, so.
Well, we can talk about it, but I mean, it's like, I feel like we're always, I mean, that's something we're always talking about. I mean, and everyone can talk about what they want to. I want to talk about like funding something for Broken Arrow because honestly, I don't feel like. mean, that's something we're always talking about. I mean, and everyone can talk about what they want to. I want to talk about, like, funding something for Broken Arrow, because honestly, I don't feel like our federal delegation has anything for Broken Arrow that I know of, really. I mean, like, as far as giving us funding for something, I mean, and I feel like that's something that we could really work on, like trying to get something.
The vice mayor has a good point, okay? And I just, let me just expand upon that for a minute. Since I've been here, through the efforts of working, our engineering construction team, working through NCOG, we've secured probably 10 to 12 million dollars of grant funding for roads. Some of that's the allotment Broken Arrow gets, but we've had a couple of projects that we needed additional funding, and so we've gotten that. I can tell you that we applied for, whether it was build, the build program, we applied for it on four different occasions, and out of one year, we actually made the second to the last cut. And every year, Senator Inhofe always gives us a letter of support for this. We do not get one from Senator Langford. And Senator Langford has, and maybe his policies change, and so I stand corrected if it has, is that he, if, he does not believe, it's not his policy to give letters of support where the money goes directly to cities. He would prefer to see the money go to the state and then go through a COG, for example. That's what I was told, that's what we've been advised of. And if that policy has changed, but if I correct me if I'm wrong, Kenny, but I will tell you, is that all of our letters of support have come from Senator Inhofe, and I think we've actually gotten, Senator Mullen has supported us.
We just promoted him.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I represent...
Oh, wow.
I was putting to the fact that he announced, excuse me, okay? Anyway, so, yes, I mean, I think it's a question to be asked, but in terms of, we were pointing in the right direction sometimes on where funding is, but in terms of getting something from those letters, we haven't seen anything.
Senator Langford's office has always worked well with helping us get U.C. Council things done and things like that, but as far as the support of the nuts and bolts, I'm not saying Senator Langford hasn't helped, but Senator Inhofe has always come through. If we need something, when the IRS had a lien on property we were trying to purchase, it was Senator Inhofe's office with the work of the previous mayor and actually myself that got that done.
And myself.
Yeah, but, I mean, set meetings and literally educated them on what that was, and they turned around and called and got it lifted. So I can't speak to what Senator Langford has or hasn't done, but I know Senator Inhofe has come through for us. It's just that one out of 100 doesn't always get what we need. And we really do need both of our senators and our full congressional delegation, and Congressman Hearn and Congressman Mullen still represents part of us, and even if he didn't, I think he'd still be on our side, because he always has been.
You know, I can tell you, 20, 25 years ago, when we'd go to these, they were more accessible. You know, it's hard to get in their office now. Just every year, it's more and more difficult. But at that time, they would meet with us one evening, all the Oklahoma delegation, the senators, and the Republican and Democrats, both they got along at that time, and they would both be there. The senators, one was Republican, one was a Democrat. All the state representatives came to the same place. The press was there, from Oklahoma press, Oklahoma Municipal League would handle it, and they'd meet at one of the Russell Office Building or one of the office buildings, and we'd spend the evening with them and visit with everybody, all the legislators, federal legislators across the state.
Have we invited them to our dinners?
We, they are invited to the Oklahoma delegation dinner. I'm not sure, they send someone.
No, I mean, like our U.C. Council dinner.
Oh, I don't...
Have we invited them?
I don't know if that's... We did invite, we invited someone from Senator Inhofe's office one year, because they indicated a wish to be there. I don't remember what they claimed.
So when you get all of them in one building, I mean, really, you spend the evening, talk about it, and, you know, they stayed in there and visited. It was just, it's a different world now.
They're more likely to come to the youth stuff, because that's touchy-feely.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, let's take advantage of that. I mean...
And I will, I will correct the record.
Use our kids to get our...
Following the 2-2-1 rule we had, we're following, I will correct the record, the former mayor and I spent about 20 minutes talking with Senator Inhofe's staff about the IRS thing, followed by, Councilor Wimpey at that time came in and then had another discussion. So they got a full load of Broken Arrow that day. So thank you for reminding me of that.
Let me tell you, that was an amazing event, because if those conversations hadn't taken place, and then the White House following up as a result of Senator Inhofe calling, that lien would have been removed, and we wouldn't have that brand-new school out there and the opportunity to actually move forward with Challenger Sports Complex and the land swap that we did where our new Southwest Park's going to be. And so, that's the kind of cooperation we need. And that's why, to me, when there's so limited amount of funding out there, I think that we need all of our delegation to support the requests that we have out there. And I would add, there is one item that I just looked over and forgot, I'd like to put broadband on there, because there is, obviously, we, I've got some, do have some good news, and I did want to dominate this meeting and talking tonight, because it's your meeting. We did get some very good news from Wagner County, that they are going to be providing some funding for broadband, and Norm sent out an email today that said we would go in before the Tulsa County Commission for some possibly broadband funding. And then after we secure those, the plan is to go back to the Muskogee Creek Nation, as well as the Cherokees, and be able to show the partnerships that we've secured to get additional funding. So there is going to be funding available for broadband, and that may be something that there is, our senators might be willing to support us on, because there are funds available in a bill that's been made available. So I'd like to see broadband added to that.
Agreed.
So what, do you need us, it says approve the City Broken Arrow's priorities? And I, the vice mayor is correct, it should be Broken Arrow-centric. If we have a finite number, it should be Broken Arrow-centric if it can with...
Well, and why can't we put everything, like, have everything in the packet? And then may, as, whatever the meeting, like, let the meeting dictate...
Read the room.
Yeah.
Sure.
What we...
I think there's wisdom in that as well.
If the council approves everything that you've spoken tonight, we will put together some short, a short little paragraph and any relative support information that we can gather, and then the councils can leave that and show, "These are the issues that we have determined are important to Broken Arrow." And then you could highlight any of those that you feel may be pertinent, that may draw the attention of that respective representative. You know, I do have some good news that I would like to share with you about the McGirt, and the fact that I did have a conversation today, you know, with their Government Relations Coordinator, great conversation about the role that Acting Attorney General Kyle Haskins is going to be moving into as the counsel for the National Council, and that the chief will be appointing a new AG probably in the next month or so, and that now it's, Acting General, Attorney General Haskin has, is going to be talking to the National Council about the adoption of the municipal codes that are needed in order to support our municipalities to continue the cooperation that we have. And that I emailed today, all of the city managers, that would be applicable to try to get a meeting together the week of March 21st, to sit down to continue the conversation that we had from the great meeting that we had on January 27th, to try to continue our relationship and get the codes adopted, that we can continue to work together. So it was a very productive meeting today, and I think these changes, having the AG move to the general counsel for the National Council, the legislative body, which I still think it's important that in the next couple of months, we reach out to our members of the Muskogee Creek Nation National Council, and invite them to Broken Arrow, to learn, to work with each other at a legislator to legislator. I think that's extremely important, and I'm going to be recommending that we coordinate those meetings, hopefully, when we can, maybe this spring. Council interested in participating?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. So it was a good meeting today, and I'm excited about the movement that I found out today in order to, under Chief Hill's administration, to keep things moving forward to where you can get those codes adopted, to help our police department and all the other cities. I'm sure we'll probably meet the week of the 21st, and I'll update you afterwards.
Judge Haskins will be good at that. I'd make a motion to approve the City Broken Arrow's priorities, as amended and presented to the city manager this evening, to be presented by the parties appearing before our congressional delegation. Oh, yes, thank you.
Second. Motion and second. Roll call. All right, motion passes. Item 10, preview ordinances. 10A, consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance closing a portion of a utility easement from Benjamin and Jessica Lauren Bowie, married on property located approximately one-third mile north of Yazoo Street and one-third mile west of Knight Street. Larry Curtis.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Larry Curtis, Community Development Director. The applicants are requesting to close a portion of the easement to facilitate the construction of an in-ground pool. The remainder of the easement shall be left open and accommodate utilities in the area. Staff has reviewed the documents, recommendations of acceptance by the utility, and easement closure. AEP, PSO, Windstream, ONG, and COGS have no objections to this easement closure. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any discussion? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. There are no ordinances, remarks from governing body members.
All talked out.
Well, we did the, I know some of you, and some of you are scheduled to do the Breathe Across America. I did mine today at Timber...
Timber Ridge.
Timber Ridge. Yeah, they were so cute, so cute.
Yep.
So...
It's always fun. They ask really great questions.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you eat snacks in bed? As a matter of fact, I do. And I just knew that they asked that question one time, because it was like, they probably got in trouble for eating snacks in bed, and then so they're going to go home and say, "The mayor said she eats snacks in bed."
Yeah.
Very smart kiddos.
That's all I got.
I'm just going to remind everyone, March 12th, because we will not have another council meeting, but we have our Seventh Annual St. Patrick's Day Celebration, Shamrock the Rose. It is a benefit for Soldier's Wish, and should be a good evening for the whole community. It's a kid's zone and live music, Kiss cover band, what more could you want? Totally St. Patrick's Day right there, yeah. That's right. Makes for a really good pick, though, so. And they're Broken Arrow boys, so.
And, you know, I've been so honored to serve on the OML, the Legislative Committee this year. I mean, I feel like, I mean, I've worked really hard on this committee, and I've learned a lot, and I know Lisa has, too. I mean, and, I mean, we got, there was a bill today that was, it wasn't, it still made it out of committee, but they, the title was stricken or whatever, so that makes it a lot harder to get through. So that's a big deal. So, I mean, we're making progress with some things, but I really appreciate, Trevor, y'all, like, sending things last minute, and, you know, and I don't know who put together, like, the TIF stuff that I got, but that was, you know, I appreciate...
Jennifer Rush did.
Okay, I mean, I really appreciate that, because it's a lot of information, and, but I think it benefits us, so that's a good thing. So I'm learning a lot. But anybody know what amendment we're on?
Nine?
Yes, we're on the Ninth Amendment. Very good. You hit us gold star. So, Ninth Amendment, "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." And, yeah, that's really hard to understand. So I wrote some, this is a summary, "So the Ninth Amendment guarantees that anything not specifically written in the Constitution may be retained by the people. This amendment was specifically written because there were arguments about wanting to have a Bill of Rights. Some worried that by listing part of the Constitution as the Bill of Rights, that would be interpreted as the Bill of Rights gave power to the government by specifically discussing what the government could not do. The Ninth Amendment was written to say, just because something isn't listed, doesn't mean that right can be violated. When James Madison introduced the Ninth Amendment to the House of Representatives, he said that this draft was to prevent increasing the power of the government and is put in as a cautionary measure. He felt the first eight amendments talked about how the federal government could exercise its powers, and the Ninth Amendment referred to many rights that still could not be taken away by the government. Today, the Ninth Amendment is used mainly to stop the government from expanding its power, rather than just limiting their power. Sometimes courts try to use the Ninth Amendment as a way to provide and enforce rights that are not actually talked about in the Constitution. The first significant Supreme Court case where the justices considered the Ninth Amendment was Griswold versus Connecticut in 1965 by discussing the right to privacy. So I feel like I need to do that little, that little thing when I was a kid. What was that, the cartoon, the Constitution?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like I need to do that dance.
I know, it's a bill. Sitting here on Capitol Hill.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's good. Appreciate that.
The language you usually hear, the paraphrase of that is, the...
The song, or the...
No, of the amendment is, is, "Powers not specifically granted to the government are reserved to the people."
Yes.
Schoolhouse Rock.
Yes.
I knew you'd do that, you were sitting there.
Remarks by city manager.
You know, I've talked enough. But you know what? I'm going to ask if the voice of God has any comments, or Kenny Schwab. You guys have anything to add that I missed?
Or Kenny Schwab.
Or Kenny Schwab. Well, you're in good company, Kenny.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. We do have executive session.
Make a motion to take a brief recess to enter Bama and Beta.
Second. Make a motion and second, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. The things aren't churning peers, I don't remember. Need some water, some water?
All right. Call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority Meeting to order. Roll call.
That one you do have to...
Yeah, that one you do have to verbally say.
When we go in.
You do have to do roll call.
Okay. Four?
Here.
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 Here. Here. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Make a motion and second, roll call. You're ready to move, Lisa. It's... Why do I need to hit it?
We need encouragement.
Yeah.
There are no public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions, or awards. Moving on to general authority business, item 6A, consideration discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute a professional consulting agreement with HDR Engineering for Grand River Water Supply Study. Ethan Edwards, you are before us.
Good evening, Authority members. Ethan Edwards, Director of Engineering and Construction. At a previous meeting of the Authority, we received a direction from the Authority to pursue this study a little further. So to give a little background, Bama's long-term surface water plan was completed by HDR in July 2015, which included evaluation of several options. Back in 2017, a follow-up study was conducted and identified the continued use of the Vertigee River, as well as potential future Grand River water usage as potential future water So tonight, we're asking to conduct a follow-up study to look at demand projections through the year 2070, which will take roughly about eight months to complete the scope, including high-level treatability options for the Grand River water supply, and to do some raw water pipeline condition assessment on some of the addition, some of the existing piping, such as soil analysis, some excavations to determine roughly what the exterior of the pipe looks like, so that we can kind of make an evaluation of what needs to be done to complete any improvements in the future. And then we would culminate with a final report and then a presentation to the Authority.
Well, thank you all for this, and I want to thank Kenny Schwab for, I've been harassing him about this for the last six, seven years. And so, thank you for getting this moving. This is one of the most important things, I think, we can do under Bama business. I'd make a motion to approve the professional consultant agreement with HDR Engineering regarding the Grand River water supply.
Second.
I'm excited about this also. You know, I still consider the Vertigus as being secondary water source, especially in the summertime. And to have a dynamic community in 2070, as you say, I think we do need to have a, certainly you say, I think we do need to have a, certainly a primary water source with better quality water. So, I'm hoping it demonstrates that, but I'm excited that we're continuing looking at this.
So, some of the intent of this study is to maximize what we actually have, and what can be reused, and look at delivery methods to the plant, how to store the water at the plant site. So, this is going to be a very comprehensive, comprehensive study, and give us a really good idea of what we need to look at as far as the future is concerned. It's extraordinary important.
Sorry about it.
My grandson will be 50, 2070.
He's still going to be here.
He needs water.
I'll still be here, sir.
I'll be nine to seven, but the city manager will be there.
We hope to complete the study before 2070.
Well, our great-grandkids need water, don't they?
Yeah. I'm late.
Do it for the children. We have to harass you.
I love it. Any other questions I can answer?
Nope. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. You could speed it up a little, if you could, but
They voted.
We enjoy that.
All right. Item seven, remarks by governing bodies. City manager?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Motion and second. Roll call. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Tony. Call that Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority Meeting to order. Roll call. Here?
Here.
Yes.
Here. Yes, or here.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, here.
Sorry.
Yes, she's here.
Are there any items from the consent agenda?
I know.
Do you know how to do this yet, Tony? Are there any items from the consent agenda to be removed?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Make a motion and second.
See if I still know how to do it.
There are no presentations. General Authority Business, remarks from governing bodies. City manager?
No, Madam Chair.
There's no executive session?
Make a motion with second.
Make a motion with second.